The Air Select Board to order for Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological and problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 897-9080-0793 or by calling 929-205-6099. Predicial information about remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at ATM at air dot MA dot US or 978-772-8220, extension 100 prior to the meeting. Ask everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I have none. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We do have a couple of announcements this evening. The American Legion Post Number 139 will host a Veterans Day ceremony at Town Hall at 11:00 AM on Saturday, November 11th, 2023. Second announcement is a winter parking ban will be in effect from November 15th through April 15th. This parking ban prohibits parking any motor vehicle on any street or sidewalk in the town of Air between the hours of 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. The winter parking ban also prohibits parking any motor vehicle on any street or sidewalk in the town of Air during a snowstorm. The purpose of this parking ban is to assist with the town's Public Works Department with snow plowing and snow ice removal operations. Is anyone here for public input?
Pauline.
Pauline? Good evening. You might still be on mute. Do we have sound?
Not here.
Oh. We hear you now.
We found you.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, no, that's all right. I won't take up much of your time. I know Dan has a report for labor and maybe he could address this, but he'll, he might chuckle. I want to thank him first for changing the configuration of the light at Addison Central. But as we all know, now it's dark at 4:30, making crossing the street far more hazardous than even in daylight. I had two recent harrowing experiences, which I, one of which I shared with Chief Gill, but I could not locate the car. And I had two suggested proposals that might help a little bit. I asked last year, you'll remember Scott, I believe, at Capital Planning for funds to put up the flashing crosswalk signs. And I was, the suggestion was tabled, I guess, until a study was done. I haven't seen the study yet, but I'll bring that up at another time. Adams and Central Street could certainly use one now that the crosswalk has moved because when people are parked on both sides of the crosswalk, you cannot see across the street. You will go by there tonight on your way home, you could probably take a look. There is a small light on the corner. The pedestrian signs that were put up are one-sided. My first suggestion would need, be to make them double-sided so that they can be seen from both directions on either side of the street because right now it's not easy to do that. And since we can't have the flashing signs at the moment, maybe a solar light could be set up on the pole so that these signs are illuminated, at least to some extent, after dark. You can't see to get across the street. I carry a flashlight, but that doesn't seem to, it doesn't help me see the cars coming even with the headlights. So that's all I want to say. I just would like you all to look into it more and see if there's something that can be done.
Thank you, Pauline. We'll definitely, taken some notes, saw Dan taking some notes, so we'll definitely look into that. Thank you. Anyone else for public input this evening? No? Okay. So next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing for the change and alteration of the premises pursuant to general law, Chapter 138, Section 12, All Alcoholic Beverage Restaurant. Marco de, Marco A. De Chico Enterprises doing business as Lucia's Tavala Restaurant, 31 Main Street, Air, Massachusetts.
Town of Air, Notice of Public Hearing, Air Select Board. The Air Select Board will conduct an in-person and remote public hearing on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023, at 6:05 PM at the Air Town Hall, 1 Main Street, Air, Mass. 01432. Regarding an application for a change, alteration of premise of current general law, Chapter 138, Section 12, All Alcoholic Beverages Restaurant, from Mark A. De Chico Enterprises, LLC, doing business as Lucia's Tavala Restaurant, 31 Main Street, Air, Mass. Applicant is seeking to add 32 seats by expanding indoors 1,350 square feet into the existing 35 Main Street and 1,700 square feet of outdoor space located on patio in the rear of restaurant. For Zoom call-in information, please contact ATM at air dot MA dot US or 978-772-8220, extension 100. Name of applicant, Mark A. De Chico Enterprises, doing business as Lucia's Tavala Restaurants, 31 Main Street, Air, Mass. 01432. Date of public hearing, Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. Time of public hearing, 6:05 PM. And location of the public hearing is remote participation meeting held on Zoom. Zoom ID 897-8090-0793.
All right. Carl, I'll turn it over to you for background, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We received an application from Mark De Chico back on October 17th. He's looking to expand his current operation of Lucia's over to 35 Main Street, which is where Tipo Tacos used to be.
That's correct.
And during the pandemic, the ABCC allowed all licensees to temporarily expand their locations to include outdoor seating. By April of '24, it needs to be made permanent if, if folks are looking to continue that. So Mark has included that in his application to move forward to continue using that back patio area. And then, excuse me, all the department heads have looked at it, everything's good to go. We just have to, if this is approved tonight, you know, it'll get submitted to the state. We have to just have you fill out a new form with Bridget and then the Shoba Boards to help to expand the space.
Okay.
But that's, that's where we're at.
Excellent. Thank you, Carly. Open up, any questions from the board?
I have no questions. I think this is a great idea.
So do I do that with Bridget beforehand?
So you can start that process, assuming this is approved tonight.
Okay.
You can start that process tomorrow because we have to wait for the state to approve this as well. So they can go at the same time.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions either, actually. Very happy to hear this, so very supportive.
I'll make a motion that the board approve, let me make sure I word this right. The application for the change, alteration of the premise of current, current general law, Chapter 138, Section 12, All Alcohol Beverages Restaurant from Mark A. De Chico Enterprises, LLC, also known as Lucia's Tavola Restaurant, be expanded from 31 Main Street to also to include 35 Main Street and to add, make the patio permit.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And chair says aye.
Thank you. I'll be attached. Yeah, I'll be attached.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, guys.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Thank you. Up next, Dan Manchelwick, Director of Department of Public Works. Dan, welcome.
Hey, good evening. So the, the first item on my agenda here is the agreement for the Kitty Junction Playground Project. So this is just a carry-on from the, the previous meeting. The board awarded the project, and so this is the signature execution of the contract with Sella Construction. And, and it's in the amount of $454,575 for signature by the chair. I don't know if you want any other discussion, but...
I guess, when would be, this be started and?
Yeah, so...
Potential completion date?
So the materials which we ordered first time we could, first time we could in July aren't going to be arriving at this point till March 7th, so the playground materials. So I talked to the contractor, he may do some layout work this year, some minor work before the winter, but you know, you really don't want to get out there and do a bunch of things and then have the winter ruin it. So definitely first thing in the spring, we'll get going on it right away. I don't have a formal schedule from him yet, but that's the plan.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Nope. Make a motion, the board executes the contract with Sella Construction Company, LLC, for the Kitty Junction Playground Improvement Project in the amount of $454,575.
Signature by the chair.
With signature by the chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And chair says aye. Thank you.
Okay, ready for item two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the agreement for the wastewater treatment plant boiler replacement project. So this is a capital item that was voted at last town meeting. The boilers at the wastewater plant are original to the plant, circa mid-1980s, and they've never been replaced. So we put together a bid for the project and there were two bidders, the low bidder being Alanco Services Corporation, at $105,450. So we're hoping to get them in soon. There will be a lead time to obtain those boilers, but they should be able to do the work in the winter because we have two boilers. We can shut one down and do the other while we're, while we're working on it. Yep. So that's for signature by the chair as well.
I don't have any questions. Any questions from the board?
I have no questions.
No?
I'll make a motion that the board execute the contract with Alanco Services Corporation for the wastewater treatment plant boiler replacement project in the amount of $105,450 for signature by the chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Thank you.
Okay. Ready for item three? Item three is recommendation to adopt revised regulations for Woodlawn Cemetery. So the town basically took over Woodlawn in beginning of April of 2022, and around that time, we, the board adopted the regulations that the previous cemetery corporation had, just with some slight tweaks to change the name to Air. And so since then, the Cemetery Commission has been put together and has worked on revising the regulations to, to meet what's best for the town. And so those regulations are included in this packet, and at the last commission meeting, they voted to recommend the select board adopt the regulations. And just some key highlights, there's, there's details included for monument requirements, some of these things that weren't in the previous regs, how the allowable decorations and flowers out there, sales and use of lots. And, and the commission's a good job working, working hard over the past year or so, working on these. And Betsy Diskin from the commission's in the room too, if I missed anything, Betsy. But yeah, so any questions or discussion? And that's all.
I have none.
Yeah, I don't. I mean, I read through them. I think they all sound straightforward, assuming they're in line with normal cemetery practices.
Yeah. As part of the development, we looked at what various nearby communities are, are using to develop ours. Yeah. Yeah.
Sean, any questions?
Nope.
I think, and one thing I wanted to add is that the commission, going forward, one of the things they're going to start looking at from a high level is green burials. It's kind of a new thing. Westford has it, there's a few communities that do, but it's essentially a natural burial. So I don't know a lot about it, so we'll be learning a lot as, as we go, but that's kind of the next item the commission's going to be starting to look at.
All right. Thank you. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the board adopt the Town of Air Woodlawn Cemetery Regulations as included in the packet and recommended by the Air Cemetery Commission effective immediately.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
Okay. And before I forget, thanks, Pauline. I took notes on your comments earlier at the public input, and I'll work with Matt and the police chief on that. So we'll get back to you.
All right. Thank you so much, Dan. Appreciate it.
Okay. And then last item on the list is a proposed public, a proposed safety zone on Washington Street. So for that, we have a brief presentation. Matt's going to come up and the chief as well. Yeah, so I'll let Matt take the lead and we'll chime in as, as needed.
Sure. So this idea was, Chief Gill's, I can't take any credit for it, by the way. So this first slide here, what is a safety zone? I'd never heard of it until Chief Gill brought this to DWD's attention. So this first bullet point is right from the Mass General Laws. So this is an excerpt from it. It says, "The Select Board may, in the interest of public safety and without further authority, establish designated safety zones on, at, or near any way in the town that is not a highway." So we actually have one safety zone in the town that's on Sandy Pond Road near the beach, but we don't have any signs. That's actually something we're going to incorporate on a future project.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the Complete Streets Project, we're building that into the design, so that'll be part of it.
So that was 2017 that we established that safety zone. That was right after the, the state law was passed. But the, the bullet point in bold, safety zone is the only way a new regulatory speed limit can be adopted on a town on roadway without MassDOT approval. So we get a lot of questions on speed limits.
Yeah.
And this, this really clears it up. We have to actually go to MassDOT, propose a, a speed limit change, and this is the one instance where we would not have to do that.
That's it?
Yep. Awesome. So all this, all these criteria here on this slide, this is from MassDOT's guidelines. So for a safety zone, speed limit has to be 20 miles per hour, and the length of the safety zone has to be at least a quarter mile. So the safety zone, it should be adjacent to a land use likely attract vulnerable road users. So there's a bunch of examples underneath that. Parks, playgrounds, senior citizen housing and centers, hospitals, other medical facilities, high school and high education centers, daycare facilities. So really any sort of roadway where there's possible conflict between motorists and vulnerable road users. So this picture here shows Washington Street between the Groton Town Line and Groton Harvard Road. So all those blue circles are where there are posted speed limit signs. Signs on the left-hand side, those are in the southbound direction, so from Groton to Air, and signs on the right-hand side are the northbound direction. So you can see going northbound, there's a 25 mile per hour speed, a post speed limit sign, and it's 25 mile per hour right into the town line. And the other direction, that first sign is just a townwide, we have those signs at town limits. Those are 25 mile per hour unless otherwise posted. Then there's a 35 mile per hour posted speed limit just after that, which transitions to 25 mile per hour just after Madigan Lane. So this slide really culminates everything of the previous slides. So this shows what, what the safety zone, proposed safety zone would look like. So the black signs, those are existing signs to remain. The red signs, those would be proposed new signs. And the red outline, just from south of Madigan Lane to the Shoba Valley Medical Center, that would be the actual limit of a speed zone, the safety zone, excuse me.
And we, we did talk to Groton to get approval to put a reduced speed ahead sign up, just up in their limits there.
Okay.
Just in some background, you're going to hear throughout the state that this, this term vulnerable road user. So it's something that the state's really pushing to, to make the roads safer for those who, you know, have specific challenges or there are, there are populations that just really, you know, aren't able to protect themselves. Daycare centers, you know, they want to make sure that the, you know, safety zone is available there because there'd be, you know, small kids running around potentially. Hospitals and elder care facilities such as Apple Valley and Ashoba Valley, you know, you can, you can just imagine the vulnerable road user situation there. So if you, if you listen, you know, to, to news things, you know, news articles, and you'll start, you're going to start seeing more signage put up by the state about this vulnerable road user. So one of the things that we really wanted to do was slow the, slow the road down in front of the hospital in Apple Valley. You know, you, you can come clipping in, yeah, we have speed limit signs, but you know, people are coming in. So we really wanted to make the effort to slow people down in front of that area. And then as they approach into town a little bit further, and it kind of really sets in that speed limits that we already have, that 25 mile an hour. So people are already thinking, I'm going slow, not having to slow down and try to, you know, slow down at the S-curves at the 25 mile an hour zone. So we, we brought this up, and we think it's very appropriate for this area to put in that safety zone. And as we, as you just heard, that we already had a safety zone put in place in 2017, just the signs never went up. So on an upcoming road project, we're going to make sure that that, that all happens there too. So we're going to have the two safety zones. So what happens is if approved tonight, we'll, we'll get everything in place, and I just alert the state engineer, and then they just list it in their, in their rolls, and it becomes a safety zone registered in the Commonwealth.
So what would be the timing of, if it's approved tonight for getting the signage up in that area?
Yes, so one thing we had on that last picture.
Do you want me to put it back up?
If you don't mind.
Okay.
So one thing we, we're proposing right now is speed feedback signs. So speed feedback signs, those are appropriate at transition areas. So obviously a town line is a transition area. So I think that would really reinforce the safety zone and really tell people, hey, you have to slow down here. So getting the speed feedback signs, I think that would probably be the, really the limiting step for us to actually implement this.
Yeah. I mean, if the snow's not flying, then we'll be able to get out there and take care of things soon, but if not, it would have to wait to spring. It shouldn't take too long to get the signs, though. It's pretty quick.
Do, do the signs need to go through the capital planning process?
No, we, we can get them from our, our budget to get these signs. Yeah.
Good. Any questions?
No questions.
I think it's a great idea.
So just a motion?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion that the board approve the establishment of a 20 mile per hour safety zone in the segment of Washington Street near the Nashoba Valley Medical Center and the Apple Valley Center.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And chair says aye. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Excellent. Up next, we have Chuck Schultz, Facilities Director.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening.
Are you logged in already?
I'm Rob.
Sure.
But I need to start video.
Chuck, now.
Hey, good. How are you guys doing?
Over to you.
Thanks for having us. I'm here with Rob Rosari from Rosari Audio and Acoustical, and he has a presentation for you guys for the Great Hall tonight. He's just, got to get the screen sharing going. Thanks for having me back.
Wants me to quit. Oh, my God.
Been gone so long.
I know, I know.
I actually had it on my calendar last week to make sure that it was going to be on the agenda because you had said it was going to be November.
Tonight's the night, baby. Let's take one second. Rob's just got to log back in really quick. He's going to share a screen. Yeah, he has about over 40 slides of all the acoustical testing.
I don't know what you're saying.
Renderings of what it proposed would look like, costs of what the proposed system would entail and all that stuff. So as soon as he gets on, he'll start showing us and hopefully you guys like it.
Yeah, there you go. All right.
There it goes.
You should be able to share a screen.
Doesn't like this. It's not liking this.
Yeah, so you can, yeah, you can click right here. Note that little triangle to the right.
Well, it doesn't need my camera, does it? We don't care about that.
No.
We just want to share the...
Yeah.
So...
Can you make it bigger?
So you know...
Technology's only good when it works.
Macs don't work too good in the town hall. We're PC guys, or PC people around here.
It's got all kinds of security stuff and...
Yeah, my daughter's used, used Macs, and my daughter asked me an Excel question, and Excel on a Mac is completely different.
You're allowed to share here, so I think it's on your end.
Yeah, I went through this already. It's, oh my God. Well, let's see. Is there nothing? Everything's in USB.
I can operate it to the monitor.
Yeah, USB, yeah, that'd be fine.
Take one sec.
How do we get the...
Carly's got the computer, mouse and keyboard right there. She'll get to it for you.
No. No.
Oh, my God.
Was that a Mac? Oh, you're going to, yeah, you might have a problem.
No, no, don't. It works on my PC usually.
Don't do that?
Yeah.
What? No?
Now, if you format it, it'll erase everything.
Yeah. Yeah. You're going from an Apple to a Windows. You can go to a Windows to Apple, but not always Apple to Windows. Okay. So I don't know what to do.
All right, we'll just talk it out then. Even if you wanted to scoot the computer over so you guys can see from his laptop. I apologize.
Sorry about that. Okay. So anyway, so this is the hall now, and the project we're working on is to update the hall, the acoustics, and add technology to it. Right now, it doesn't have any technology per se. We want to have similar technology, what's in this room, just updated and on a much larger scale. So right now, the hall is very acoustically lively, as we call it, suffers from an abundance of reflections. And they're traveled back and forth 44 times a second across the width and 37 second, 37 reflections a second from the ceiling. It's a lot, thousands and thousands of reflections from every word that's spoken. So the intelligibility is very poor, as you know, if you walked in there and tried to talk to somebody, even when you're close up to somebody, it's difficult to understand. And that's all it has to do with reflection. So what we need to do is add absorption to the room, and there are multiple ways to do it, but absorption has to be added carefully and in controlled fashion so we don't make it very dull sounding, where we want to be able to make it so 200 people can understand the PA system no matter where they are. You want very even coverage. So one of the concepts I came up with was to, you know, there's a nice stage there, but it's really just kind of wide open. So I wanted to turn it into kind of a faux proscenium stage by adding drapes, theatrical curtains, which are very heavy velour, like 22 ounce. And that will add a tremendous quantity of absorption to one end of the room. And so that will kind of, so they have a dual function, both adding absorptive properties and also now creating a stage with a travel curtain that's can be motorized. And so all kinds of events can happen there, and they'll look very professional, and it'll work very well. All the materials are flame retardant. So there's going to be sound system and all kinds of technical equipment in there. Let's see. Here's one scenario where we have a meeting with microphones that are very similar to the setup here, and the acoustical panels that will be put on the ceiling and on the walls and along the curtains, it's all been calculated to bring the reverberation time. Reverberation time is how long it takes for sound to kind of just dissipate in the room. Right now, it's over four seconds, which is great for baroque music, organ music and choirs, but not for speech, not for any type of production. Right now it's over four seconds, which is great for baroque music, organ music and choirs, but not for speech, not for any type of production or other type. So we have, let's see. So the rear wall will have some acoustical panels. Again, this is custom designed to combat the reflections that are propagating in that room. We have a RCP, so ceiling, let's see.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
Explain, what do you mean by reflections? You're not actually talking about light, are you?
Exactly, just like light. Just a mirror and light reflects off it. The hard walls and the floor and the ceiling reflect sound the exact same way.
Okay, all right. It was just throwing me the terminology, so I just wanted to double check.
Works almost automatically, you know?
Okay.
And so without any absorption, so all surfaces are hard, the floor, the ceiling, walls are 100% hard. And so the sound bounces back and forth, again, 40 times a second across the width. And it will continue until the sound is actually just absorbed by the air itself. That way, we know as we get further away from the source of sound, say if music's playing and you walk further away, it gets quieter. Why is it quieter as you're further away? Because the sound wave has to go through more, a larger volume of air, a larger path of air. And the air will do a little bit of absorption. But again, it takes almost four and a half seconds for that to happen naturally in the room, which if you look at the speech, I'm talking maybe 22 syllables, you know, in a very short period of time. And the reflections are in the room and they, they kind of overlap my second syllable. So for one syllable, it bounces around and now I say second syllable and the first one's still sustaining in the room. And that just keeps going on and on and on. And so the intelligibility is very poor, very difficult to understand voice. The music is, again, unless it's some type of classical music or, you know, organ church music, which is conducive to long reverberation times, then the intelligibility is very poor. The distinction, the clarity, definition, all these acoustical properties are very low. I've measured them all in the room and they're extremely low. So we want to make the definition much higher, intelligibility much higher, the clarity much higher. So we have panels on front wall, rear wall and ceiling. And that will, the proper design will make the room sound very usable. Talk about reflect, here's a graph of reflection. The blue is, say, it was called incident, the wave coming out of my mouth hitting the walls, incident wave. When it hits a hard surface, it bounces off and the angles are equal. So the angle of reflection is equal to the angle of incidence. So it bounces off and this reflection in the hall is almost the same strength as the original sound because nothing's absorbing it. So if we put some absorber on the surface here, then that will mitigate the strength of that reflection. And diffusion, we'll use a little bit of diffusion as well, which scatters sound and makes it more even over a large area. So we'll basically, it won't be a bad seat in the house for, you know, if there's 50 people or 250 people, it'll be the same and very uniform. Let's see what else we have here. So here's an elevation. So here's drapes shown, sort of a podium on stage, speakers on the lip of the stage in front of the curtains, podium would go in front of the curtains. Windows would also have similar treatment, better looking than I've drawn here. And this top here would actually go all the way up to the ceiling and match the shape of the ceiling. So there wouldn't be any gaps as they're shown here. So it would look very nice and all the black valance at the very top that would make with the ceiling. So it would look very professional. And then behind the drapes, there'd be a projection screen and in this, the motorized travelers, as it's called, the, the, the front curtain would open, would flank the screen. It's motorized, it hides up here, so it deploys down. Again, this is all done with a touch of a button. There'd be a wall panel where you hit buttons, it's a movie preset. And the house lights shut off, the drapes open, the screen comes down and there's a projector in the back, so it'll give you rear projection. So that way there's no, nothing hanging out in the middle of the audience that somebody has to descend down 20 feet, which would be a very expensive lift. So up in the, there's a little alcove in the rear of the stage and the projector will hide up there. So it'll just deploy down about four and a half feet. It'll hit the screen and it'll look very professional. It also is less sensitive to ambient light. So if it's a lecture and someone wants to take notes, the, the lighting in the hall does not have to be as dim as, as it would be in a movie theater or if you had front projection where the light would bounce off the screen and interfere. Any questions so far? I'm talking.
No, that's good.
Yeah. So, yeah, the speakers are the heaviest thing that we would be suspending from the ceiling. So I elected not to suspend them. And they would be bolted to the stage so they couldn't be moved around because the angles would be set, you know, for, for the audience. And the speaker system is a very, very nice system. Let's see, images of the equipment. So speakers for different, these are for long throws and this will hit the mid to the rear of the hall. This is for the front and this is a woofer, subwoofer for movies and for music, basically. That would only turn on when the movie preset is hit. If it's a lecture or presentation, the subs would be off. So there's a control system. So there's just various wireless microphones of both the handheld variety of also the head worn variety and table mics, some of this, but it's much nicer sounding. And there'll also be usually panel discussions and things like that. So here's a small list that the projector will sit on, that will come down from the very rear of the stage. There'd be a couple panels like this, so you can just turn on the house lights when you walk in instead of a conventional switch. Instead of having to go through the touchscreen, the touchscreen will be custom programmed to kind of run all of the system. So there'll be very little knowledge that will have to be known to walk in there and do any type of, you know, presentation. So everything will kind of be what's called macros, everything, all presets. Everything's 100% programmable, even the labels. We can have a, whatever, the buttons can be labeled with whatever word you like, whatever language you like, bilingual, you can, you can hit a button and all, everything will switch to French or Spanish or whatever. So that's all that's possible, basically. And again, you know, to do a presentation, to do a meeting, to video conferencing, there'll be a button for that. The whole system will set up for that particular function. So again, it's, the control system is really key because it takes, this very sophisticated equipment makes it ultra simple to use, basically. And there'll also be some instructions built into the touch panel in case you get stuck and say, which button do I hit? Just go to help button and it'll say, hit this button for this certain function. So let's see, what else do we have?
I just see a lot of people pressing the wrong button.
I'm trying to. You don't break anything, so you could dance on the buttons and nothing is going to, you know?
All of us going, oh, there were no buttons.
It'll be, it'll be okay. It'll kind of take care of itself and it'll, you actually won't be able to really bounce on the buttons. There'll be a timer between buttons, so there'll be just so quickly you could go from one, you know, if you went from presentation mode to movie mode. A lot of things have to happen because we've got electromechanical things. We have a curtain to open, a screen to come down, a projector come down. The projector has to warm up, that takes about 40 seconds. So that's all kind of programmed and time wise. So it's kind of impossible just to dance on it and make things just, you know, jiggle all over the place, you know? It'll be very civil. It'll, it'll make, it's civil. And that way it kind of protects itself as well. Any notes that we have here? Would you like to see the cost?
Yes.
Cadillac of.
It's really important part.
You ready? So I have a, I mean, there's about 60 pages here altogether, but I do have a financial summary. And so basically, and I just started at the top, it covers a lot of aspects. We have sound system, video system, control system, motorized stage curtains, theatrical lighting system, all the acoustical treatments, video conference equipment, motorized traveler, I said that already. The installation, it'll have an assistive listening system. So anyone will be able to walk in and grab a little pack and either hook it up to their, if they have some type of hearing assistance, it'll be compatible with that or there'll be an earbud or headphones. There's a whole little kit that comes with a bunch of variety, you know, a variety of interfaces. And I even added some allowances in here for shipping and handling miscellaneous supplies. Because we're hanging from the ceiling, I'll recommend that we spend a few hours with the structural engineer to get their blessing as far as attachment to the ceiling. So I've got, some wires may need to be covered, so I've got some carpentry expenses. So I put a bunch of stuff in here and I call the allowances and there's actually a sheet for every one of these categories that we probably don't have time to go through right now. But anyway, we have a total of 664, 664,000. Again, that includes a lot of, you know, again, 20,000 for shipping and handling because we've got a lot of heavy things and maybe a lot less, you know? Sometimes you spend X amount with a manufacturer and you get free shipping and so you save $2,000 something from the speaker manufacturer. I mean, this is, but I wanted to kind of make sure it was. Yeah, as me and Robert discussed, it would probably be easier to peel things back than add to it later on. So we wanted to come to you guys with the full everything and then, you know, later on, start talking about, hey, we actually want this, we want that. And, but we figured to go all out and present it all to you guys and add more. Again, yeah, I mean, multi-function, many systems, you know, largely extremely professional installation, you know, we don't want to get the, the guy down the street that just put a shingle out and say, we install AV, you know? It might be a low bid, but that would not be conducive to a project like this. It'd end up being more expensive in the long run or, you know, or they go out of business and then, you know?
How much are the curtains?
The theatrical, well, I have the acoustical treatments, so 116, almost 117,000, but that's for all the curtains, the track, the motors, the panels on the ceiling. So we had two quotes before for 60 grand just for the panels on the ceiling. So if you subtract that.
Wow. Well, how, would the panels in the ceiling affect the fire?
Well, no, they'd be mounted on the ceiling, like they wouldn't hang. They would be like, yeah, like.
Push on the ceiling.
Yeah, exactly.
Fire suppression.
Reflected ceiling plan. Yeah, the suppression system would be lower than the actual panels. Right, yeah, these, these will not interfere. I made sure of that, yeah. I have their photos and measurements. Yep, and these are, again, everything's flame, 100% flame retardant. All the, the curtains are actually what's called inherently IFR, inherently flame retardant. So they're used in schools and theaters, you know, from New York City to, you know, elementary schools, whatever. They're very, very, very safe. And all, all the materials I've specified are that. Massachusetts had one of the strictest fire codes in the country 30 years ago. And so I've, I've become accustomed to specifying nothing but Class A materials that meet all the ASTM codes and stuff.
So I haven't seen the thing, but do the tiles encompass the whole ceiling?
No.
Or is it open because of the sprinkler system?
Well, it's, well, that's reflected ceiling plan.
Above, you have to.
Yeah, there's a reflected ceiling plan here that, so all the colorful items are panels that are directly mounted to the ceiling and they come down from the ceiling a maximum of five inches.
Oh, okay.
So there's plenty of room between, yeah, the sprinklers and, and the bottom of these panels, yeah.
Robert, do you have a question, comment?
Mr. Chair, through you. So is it safe to say what you have designed, my word, we'll call it the Cadillac, like so that 664,000, that's what you said?
Yes.
Right? That would be the optimal scenario, for lack of a better word?
Optimum, but not Cadillac, we'll say, you know?
Sounds like a Rolls Royce. So I guess, so my, my question is, right. And no, and appreciate that the work that has been done and I don't claim to, and this has been a longstanding issue and concern of the town, it's minimize that space, as I'm sure Chuck has told you. I guess what my question would be, and in the interest of time, we can, with Chuck, you know, discuss further, I think we'd be interested to see some further scenarios that we could make significant progress. I mean, ultimately, it's, it's not my decision, we have to go through a whole process, but as I know you can appreciate, I mean, 664,000 is a, is a significant capital investment. And I'm not saying that that couldn't be done or what have you, keep everything on the table, but I guess the takeaway for tonight is, I think we'd be definitely interested in some other options or scenarios with, within this that we could make progress.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess to kind of add on to what Robert said is also the ability to break down the project possibly into two parts. So, you know, the, the biggest thing for us is the acoustics, just in general, the acoustics. You know, and like 664 is a lot, I, I don't think, I'll, I'll say this, I mean, for everything it includes, it's not bad because what I'm kind of looking at is we are strapped for space here. So if for $600,000 we can open up a new meeting area that is effective, you know, I, I think that's a worthwhile investment, you know, whether it's the full 664 or not. But from an immediacy of trying to get that space usable as quickly as possible, it'd probably be to break down, doing the acoustical portion of it in one segment and then possibly looking at the, you know, the other bells and whistles that we want that could actually maximize the space. So, you know, make it, minimally make it usable for, for meetings. And then at the other end of the spectrum is just kind of getting it there where it's highly effective for larger meetings that can't be facilitated down here.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And I had in mind that because the space is how it is, it's not really usable for a lot of different functions, that with technology and with good acoustics and good technology, you're going to find a lot more use for it, you know? Plays, I mean, whatever, theater you can do, music. Not that this hall is exactly conducive, but Lynn uses the town hall for concerts, makes thousands of dollars a week and renting it out for, for shows, you know? And probably tens of thousands sometimes.
Oh, wow.
To kind of recap everything to you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to continue working with Rob. We wanted to kind of present it to you guys, everything we've worked on so far. And we'll come up with a couple more scenarios for lower cost and we'll be breaking down all the information you put together and hate to say it's more of a process, but we're just going to keep, we're going to work on it and come back to you guys with, myself with some more depth, real numbers that we can present to you guys. Or, I mean, more probably efficient way, if you had a number to work towards, you know, because, because we could keep doing this like six times over, you know?
Right.
And I didn't have one, so I, you know, again, and I didn't go, it's, it's, it's not the Cadillac, I mean, you could spend a lot more on equipment. Equipment's very expensive now, especially, this is great, I mean, it's not something we'd put in the Wang Center or something downtown, but it's, it's very robust. It's going to last. It's going to be able to take a lot of abuse, if there is any, and keep working, I mean, 10 years is it, you know? But the, the equipment will probably get outmoded before it breaks. It's extremely robust. These amplifiers can stay on 24 hours a day, seven days a week for probably about 14 years, 15 years. But they'll actually automatically power down at night.
Yeah, we don't want to pay the extra.
Yeah, we're a green community.
So Chuck, question, so we have the capital, our next portion of the capital planning starting this week. I know when I put together the matrix, I think you have this slated for FY '25.
Yes, because we still have to talk to the Historical Commission in Boston and some structural things, just a little, couple more things to check off the box first.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
For that, that's all.
Yeah, a little too early for that, unfortunately.
So then I guess before, I know, so Jan, sorry, one second. So perhaps at capital, we can bring up as part of the discussion for facilities, you know, maybe get some information. We can do the, you know, a preliminary presentation of some of the numbers and some of the things that want to be done upstairs and get the feedback from the Capital Planning Committee as to potentially a, a number that they'd be comfortable with.
Yeah, it's a very good idea. So we have a capital board that we could, I could discuss with, that the select chair is the chair of as well and come up with a number that, then we can come back to you with and come with some. See what makes sense. Yep. And then I'll even tell, you know, if you come with a number that I think is, say, unreasonable, for lack of a better word, where you say, well, we get $100,000, I might say, wait, you know, you're really not really, you know, we'd have to spread that so thin, it's almost a disservice to yourself.
Right, understood.
I mean, I'll be very honest about it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Janice.
So, first, I'm glad that the historical uh portion has gotten brought up, because I was kind of wondering, because, you know, just in the, in the review that I've done over the years, I don't know if we'll be able to do it with the ceiling, you know? Um, so that's where I had shown that curtain design to you, you know, but then the sprinklers, I guess, would be a problem. Um, but I guess, instead of a dollar amount, I don't think that we can actually sit here and say, "Well, hey, you know, we'd just like you to, you know, we don't want to spend any more than this." I think what we really need to figure out, like, what would we want to be using it for in the next, you know, few years? You know, if this was built tomorrow, what are we using that room for? So we know that, you know, the holidays are coming up, so we're going to have, you know, the, what is it, the trombone? The tubas, the tubas, okay? So we know the tubas, so I definitely agree with, you know, we're going to need the curtains, because that will also take care of the heat, okay? So, you know, little things like that, but let me just ask this too, you know, in, in attempt to see if we can kind of cut down the cost, you walk into an empty house and you've got an echo, you hang, you put furniture in, you put some pictures up, and it helps reduce that. So, just, I know it sounds silly, but like, you know, we could hang up stuff too on the walls, which would also be kind of a, a Town of Air love-me wall, and that could help a little bit with the sound, and then, you know, definitely the curtains, I mean, there are little things that can do, but I think that we need to kind of figure out, like, what do we really want to use the room for? I mean, I think of the symposium that we had a few months ago, it would have been wonderful if, if we had had this, you know, this acoustic system, but I don't know, do we need the whole, you know, pad and, you know, and, and whatnot, you know?
From my perspective, as Rob was going through the presentation with the projector and, and even like the layout of the meeting with all of, you know, we're limited here.
Yes.
So when you think about some of the meetings that, you know, the planning board has, and how many people attend those, and, you know, to be able to move into a space where the acoustics are better than they are down in this room, so.
True, but what I'm saying, do we need that big projector, or do we just need, you know, a nice screen like this?
I think for the size, space, I think the projector would be worthwhile, I mean, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah.
Because if you're sitting towards the back in a very crowded meeting, I mean, I can only squint down, and granted, I'm older, but I can only squint down to a certain point to read something that's far away and on a smaller screen. So, like, I'm open-minded, but yeah, I mean, the price is a bit high.
True.
But hopefully we can find something that, that does work um for the board, but also for capital planning.
And, yeah, not to extend this conversation too much long, so you guys got a lot to do. Through the Green Community Grant this year, we have a proposed attic insulation, um, that the attic isn't insulated at all right now. Once we insulate that attic, it might change things a bit when it comes to the acoustics.
Not really, the surface.
Okay, okay, because it's that hard ceiling that.
That would affect isolation, if you're hearing airplanes or, and birds were hearing what's going on in there, then that would help isolate.
No freebies.
Yeah, that would, yeah. Isolate. Just one other quick thing, as far as, I recommend phases very often, and that would, and it's definitely possible, but sometimes, say, if we're putting uh the curtains up and they're suspended from the ceiling, we're fixing, fixing things to the ceiling, now we've come back later to do that for acoustical panels, there'll be a, you know, a cost associated with restaging everything to, to get it back in there, so there is, you know, a, a economy of scale, basically, if you're putting up twenty points versus fifty points or something, and, uh, you know, if you're doing it different times, you're going to pay a lot more, just, just keep in mind, you know.
Thank you. Is it possible we can get that, all those slides?
They're all on that USB, and, but I'll have to.
Give me a couple, give me a week or two.
I'll reformat it for PC.
It'd just be nice to actually have all the rendered drawings.
Yeah, about fifty.
For concept.
At least fifty sheets.
Excellent.
And for every finance category, there's a sheet, individual sheet for every one of those, that has all the equipment, like number of microphones, number of speakers, number of assistive listening systems, it's all there, basically.
Excellent.
It's all on it.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Wonderful, thank you, Rob, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you guys very much for having us. Thank you.
Technical bless.
Can you grab his thumb drive?
All right, up next, we have the town manager's report, I'll turn it over to you, Robert.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Um, in terms of the administrative update, and you have the warrants that were, were approved since the board last met on October seventeenth in the packet, just wanted to highlight a few things. Um, in the area of finances and the budget, as the chair mentioned, the capital process is underway, the capital planning committee will have its first meeting this Thursday, November ninth, at five PM. All of the capital plans that were submitted by the departments are on the capital planning committee webpage on the town's website, and we've also reactivated um the FY twenty-twenty-five budget webpage, which will be used throughout the budget process to populate with um key budgetary documents and information, including uh the capital plans, and as always, if somebody needs a hard copy or would like a hard copy of one of the capital plans, um they can request that uh through the select board's office during normal business hours. Um, the finance team is in the process of finalizing um the certification um of free cash, and we hope to have that um information shortly for the board, the FinCom, and the public. Preliminary analysis is looking favorable and consistent with the trend of previous years. Uh, the tax classification hearing uh will take place uh here on December fifth at, at six PM. Uh, the board of assessors will uh make their presentation with a recommended uh range of considerations for the select board. An interesting thing we're seeing again on that front is a significant increase in, in growth uh in the town, which I'll let the assessors speak to on December fifth. Uh, the town treasurer, tax collector reports that collections remain on target, and she and I are going to start to look at um the revenue projections and discuss that further um with the buy board and the board and the FinCom moving forward. But again, at this point, no, no cautionary lights on that front, which is good. Uh, the new library boiler has been installed ahead of schedule, a special thanks to Chuck Schultz and Luke Kirkland, the library director, so uh we appreciate the board's support uh with the Opera Funds uh for that, so everything is in good shape at the library. We'll be looking to issue the FY twenty-five budget directive uh for the operating budgets um per the calendar for December first. Um, we'll maybe at a future meeting before then discuss a little bit with the board, any initial thoughts that you may have or suggestions on, on that budget directive a, as we move forward. Um, the health insurance uh process continues to move forward since the board voted to um adopt the IAC's recommendation to leave the Minuteman Noshoba Health Group, uh that communication has been transmitted uh to Minuteman Noshoba Health Group. Uh, since then, um, we understand that four or five additional towns are considering leaving, and the finance manager and the benefits and health, benefits and payroll manager attended their recent meeting, where they're going to reconvene in a couple weeks, they're e, they're even discussing the dissolving the Minuteman Noshoba Health Group. So, again, I think the town um has been proactive on that, and we'll keep the board um updated as that process moves forward. Uh, the license renewal process is well underway, a special thanks to, to Carly who keeps that organized and got all of that um out, and as this board voted previously, um with the appropriate reduction moving forward. December second is the annual holiday candlelight stroll, um which we're looking forward to, and the holiday lights uh program is underway as well, again, a special thanks to Carly for coordinating all of that, and we'll have more as, on that as we move forward. Uh, since the board last met on October twentieth, and it was Selectman Livingston attended, we had the rededication of the fountain at, at Depot Square, and was well-attended, and there was a lot of discussion about, for the spring and moving forward, programming that space for, you know, small community events and things moving forward, so we're open to ideas and suggestions um on that front. And lastly, um, we've had a few recent public safety personnel appointments, um which have been very exciting, and we were thinking that perhaps in the near future, as we've done in the past, the fire chief and the police chief could come before the board with these uh new additions to our, our town, so the board and public could meet them, so we'll coordinate that. So, again, a busy time as always, but I don't know if there's any questions uh from the board, and then I just have um two quick action items.
I have no questions?
No questions.
No questions.
All right.
Okay. There's one appointment uh for the board's consideration tonight on the recommendation of the AIR Affordable Housing Trust. I'm respectfully recommending that the select board vote to appoint Mr. Bob Williams of AIR to the AIR Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five.
Any questions?
Nope.
No, I have none.
I don't have any.
I make a motion that the board appoint Bob Williams to the AIR Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair says aye.
Okay, um, and then lastly, because we've moved into the budget season, so the number three becomes a standing item under my report, the FY twenty-five budget process update, and in the packet is the budget calendar um that the board approved. Uh, I think I touched upon sort of the initial highlights um on that for this evening, but moving forward, again, if there are any questions, concerns from the board, any of the committees, and also the, the public, um, I always feel that now is the time to have these discussions before we even get to, you know, the town meeting and so forth, and I know we're just starting this process, and I guess this is just the kickoff item for that, I don't have anything um further to add this evening. And with that, that's my report.
All right. Excellent, thank you, Robert. Uh, so there's nothing under new business or select board member questions, open up to anything anyone wants to bring up this evening? Okay, and then we have approval of the meeting minutes for October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three?
I have no changes.
I have no changes.
No changes either.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the meeting minutes of October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, is submitted.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Thank you. And with that, we are going into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the board go into executive session, pursue it to match general law, chapter thirty alpha, section twenty-one alpha. Reasons being, for number one, exemption number two, non-union personnel building commissioner contract amendment. Number two, exemption number six, consider acquisition of real property seventy-one Sandy Pond Road, and that the select board adjourn at the conclusion of the executive session and not return to open session.
Seconded.
All right, we'll call the votes. Selectman Livingston?
Aye.
Selectman Copeland?
Aye.
And Chair says aye, we're in executive session, thanks very much, everyone.